Okay, it's 5:30. We are called to order. This is the Tuesday, June 9th, regular session meeting of the Monroe County Council. And just for the record, we'll do a quick roll call here to indicate who's present. So I see Counselor McKim, Counselor Deckard, Counselor Wiltz, Counselor Iverson. Is Counselor Hawke present and is Counselor Munson present? Does not appear they are, but we have a quorum and we'll go ahead and get started. So we are called to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And so now we will move on to public comment for items not on the agenda. And I just want to briefly cover our public comment framework before getting started. So, public comment will be limited to three minutes for each member of the public who wishes to speak on items not on the agenda. If you would like to make public comment on a specific agenda item, please reserve your comments for that particular agenda item. The time limit for public comment will be applied uniformly to each speaker by the technical services administrator, who's also on the Zoom call. Individuals who participate in public comment will hear a tone before the time limit is set to expire. And then we ask that you please refrain from using any kinds of threatening or profane language during the public comment period, et cetera. So, we appreciate everybody respecting these basic kind of general guidelines for public comment. And if anybody is interested in speaking to an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand. And we will call on you first come, first served. Do we have anybody who would like to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda? And I'm not, I'm not good at, I don't, I don't know where to look for the hands, so whoever can see those, please feel free to, our technical services administrator, feel free to let that, the people speak in the, in the order you see them raise their hand.
There do not appear to be any raised hand at this moment.
It looks like we have a Nathan Muchler, who's got his, at least he's showing on the camera, he wants to speak. I think if you use the, is it the chat function where you can actually indicate where you want to raise your hand? There's a thing you can click there. So for folks who would like to do that, please utilize that feature in Zoom. Muchler, would you like to speak?
Okay, I'm going to demonstrate the sound that's going to go off approximately 10 seconds before the time limit is up.
Great, thank you.
Everybody able to hear that?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and mute you now, Nathan. Let me begin.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone can hear me clearly. My name is Nathan Muchler. I'm a resident of Monroe County in Bloomington, Indiana. And I wanted to ask the county council what caused them to rush the eviction on Courthouse Square from the 12th to tonight? That, I want to know what made it so urgent that instead of several days' notice, which while I can disagree with the need for an eviction seemed reasonable to 12 to 24 hours? When we have people who are now uncertain whether they're going to be able to stay? Where we have resources that are not able to be distributed to needy people as efficiently as possible? And in what seems to my mind, an attempt to disrupt the momentum and urgency of this movement? So I'd like to see if anyone on the council would feel comfortable addressing that. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else who would like to make public comment?
There is a Randy Paul.
Hello, Mr. Paul?
One second. Right, you may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know for some of you, I'm going to just sound like I keep talking about the same thing, but I think when you have a three-minute segment, it's probably worthwhile. I want to talk again about what happens after the pandemic and whether or not public meetings will still be held on Zoom. And I've talked about this a lot, and I've focused on people with disabilities, which are typically the ones I advocate for, but I think there's a broader part of the population that has shown that they're interested in participating in meetings. I think if you look at the attendance while meetings are on Zoom, they're pretty dramatic. So I think clearly the public wants access to government meetings. I mentioned last week, I'm not sure if it was here or at the commissioners meeting, but when I looked at the last census, it indicated there's about 8% of the population with disabilities. That group, I think, everyone should be paying attention to. I think as someone who's disabled, I think if we can do it, I think access is important. But I was also thinking about it last week. It's more than just attending meetings. I also think it's access to the political process. I'm running for county commissioner under the Green Party, and for a long time, I was worried that if by chance, and I realize it's probably remote, but if by chance I would win, how would I do the job if I can't get to the meetings? And my decision to run was based, I would have to just argue on the ADA for reasonable accommodations and have meetings held electronically for me. But now that we've been doing this for months, and we can show that it can be done, I think for people with disabilities, just to enter the political process, we have to have something like this intact. And I think that's one of the reasons why you don't see many disabled people either running for office or in office right now. I think we're blocking a big part of our population from that process. I think there are a variety of reasons why Zoom should continue or some aspect of it. And while you will be, hopefully soon, be able to meet in person as a group, as a committee, I don't see a reason now why the public can't have access somehow by Zoom or some other electronic media. So for a lot of reasons, I hope that when this is all said and done, you guys will consider to have, continue to have your meetings on Zoom or something like it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Paul, for your comments. And for the record, want to make sure that it's indicated that Counselor Hawke and Counselor Munson are present. Do we have any further public comment?
There was one more. Give me one moment, please. All right, Ericsson, go ahead when you're ready.
I'd like to second what Randy Paul shared and say that the accessibility that this has created for the community to show up to this political space and to be involved in the politics and pull behind the curtain, pull the curtain aside and be able to see what is going on is really important. And I urge this council to make that a priority moving forward for all meetings. And I want to say that I am so glad to see more people here today, and I look forward to more of our community showing up and seeing what is going on at these meetings and urging the council members to react in a way that is consistent with what they were elected to do. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson, for your comments. We have any further public comment on items not on the agenda?
Yes, there was a phone number that called in that would like to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, can you, do you all hear me?
Could you please state your name for the record, please?
My name is Mcqueeba Reese.
Hello, Ms. Reese, welcome.
Hi, how y'all doing? I'm sorry, I can't see y'all faces. Penny, thanks for, thank you for letting me know more about this. I, I just want to make a statement. I just want to remind us all of why I was able to meet with some people downtown from that's protesting at the moment. And it's been communicated that they have not been able to have any type of communication with anyone from the commission. I'm not sure how valid that is, but that kind of frustrated me and could, and kind of get, made me a little bit concerned. If knowing that there could have been a communication or a conversation, perhaps something, things could have been differently. But my number one fear, just completely transparent at the moment, is that George Floyd, at the moment, is not here anymore because of $20. And so my thought is that things could be escalated, just because tonight, it wasn't a conversation. I was able to meet with Dave and have a conversation with some, some of the protesters today. But I think that moving too quickly can cause a lot more harm. And then the thought of, the thought of law enforcement coming at night, there's a couple of individuals that are people of color. It, it does alarm me and make me definitely concerned. So that's a little bit more of my statement. I don't want to take up too much time because I could talk forever and I don't want to do that. But I am concerned that this is moving a little bit too quickly. And I just was alerted about it today, and I noticed that the eviction letter didn't mention the parameters of where the protesters could be placed or positioned, and that could have escalated into something. I don't want to make assumptions, but that could have escalated to something. So I'll yield back my time.
Thank you, Ms. Reese, for your comments. Have any further public comment on items not on the agenda?
I do, there do not appear to be any more raised hands. I have not heard about any other phone calls.
Okay, thank you very much. So that will conclude our public comment period for items not on the agenda. We will now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our department updates. We will also do a three-minute time limitation for department updates. Is there, are there departments present who would like to give an update, please? I don't, I don't see any. So we will move on to our next item, which is council liaison updates. Are there any council members who have updates? And I see Mr. Iverson's hand first, and then Ms. Wiltz, and then Mr. McKim.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Spoonmore, for recognizing me. I want to talk today to recognize that the Monroe County Health Department has put out their latest public health order to take effect on May 30th. So it's a couple weeks old, but I did want to remind the public that the general recommendations are still in place, that we must maintain a distance of at least six feet from other individuals. Must wash our hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Cover all coughs and sneezes, please, preferably with an elbow. Disinfect frequent, frequently used surfaces. Share food, drinks, and other things as little as possible. Increase ventilation of indoor spaces by opening your windows or adjusting the air conditioning as much as you can. We need to hold all necessary meetings by telephone or video conference whenever possible. And we need to refrain from shaking hands or engaging in other physical contact. We also would request that, we strongly recommend, excuse me, the use of facial coverings when in public. I'm happy to see that council staff is using facial coverings today while they're in proximity with each other and are unable to socially distance. So I encourage the community to continue to do these things. Monroe County has been very fortunate due to the Monroe County Health Department, the hard work they have done to reduce the amount of infections in our community. And I think if we can continue to do these things, we'll be able to get back to as much of normal as we can as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Ms. Wiltz?
Yes, thanks. I have just one update from the Convention and Visitors Commission that met today. The Taste of Bloomington, which typically takes place near the end of June, is not happening this year due to the emergency status. However, they are doing something instead called Taste to Go, which are bags, there's a limited number of them, but they can be picked up, first come, first served, and at the convention center. These little bags will have gift certificates to local restaurants in them. And the announcement, the formal announcement for this, I believe, is coming out in the next few days. The idea is that these could be picked up at the very least between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at the convention center, June 18th through 26th. But be looking for an announcement with more details on that.
Great, thank you, Counselor Wiltz. Mr. McKim?
Yes, thank you. Two, two things. First, I have made some adjustments to the, the revenue projection model that we've been talking about, that I've saved, that has been saved in the Dropbox, based, just based on recent information we've received. I'm not yet sure how to handle the email that we just received from the treasurer with respect to the, the property tax collections today, simply because the deadline for being, for paying late fees hasn't yet been reached. So it's, it's hard to draw any firm conclusions on that. But I guess the reason why I'm saying all this is I really want everybody to please take a look at the latest and just question everything, you know? Look at it, see, I try to document my assumptions more carefully or more clearly, and, you know, just, just look at it and tell me what you agree with or what you disagree with so that by the time it comes to the work session, we can have a more detailed conversation about it. So I would really appreciate any, any feedback, both from the council and also from, from the auditor's office.
Yes.
On that. And then my second item is, I don't know if anybody is on the, on the call from the legal department, but since several members of the public did it, mentioned the situation on the courthouse lawn, and I think there's some confusion about the situation, I guess I was wondering if, if somebody from the legal department was available to kind of clarify for all of us what the, what the situation is. There may not be anybody. Is Ms. Rice on the call?
Is Ms. Rice available?
I am trying to locate names right now.
So for the public, Ms. Rice, Margie Rice is the, one of the county attorneys who represents the county council, and she typically attends our meetings, looks like she's here present. Ms. Rice, would you like to speak?
I sure can. For the members of the public who are interested in the relevant codes that we've been talking about and with which we have talked to members of the public, you can look on our website and look at Monroe County Code Chapters 257 and 262. There are these two different code provisions that are applicable. Chapter 262 sets the hours for the courthouse lawn. The courthouse grounds are open from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Chapter 257 sets rules prohibiting camping on the courthouse lawn. Chapter 257 requires three days' notice or 72 hours' notice before camping gear or camping equipment will be removed from the courthouse. So the notice that was placed on the courthouse doors yesterday was prepared by the legal department, and I am the one who posted it on the doors. It was posted to inform people that, and to provide the 72 hours' notice, the beginning on Friday at 10:00 a.m., any equipment that is left on the courthouse lawn would be removed and taken to the highway garage, where people can contact us and we can get the equipment for them if they, if it's been abandoned. So the notice that was placed on the courthouse lawn was not about removing people from the courthouse. It was the required legal notice to tell people that within 72 hours, the equipment that is illegally placed on the courthouse grounds in violation of Chapter 257 would be removed and taken to the highway garage. Also, we ask the sheriff's deputies to go to the courthouse lawn last night and to explain that and to provide copies of the notice to, to people, and to let them know that beginning tonight at 10:00 p.m., Chapter 262 of the Monroe County Code would be enforced. That's the courthouse hours. We didn't enforce the hours earlier because we wanted to give people 24 hours' notice before it would be enforced. It is a legal code, it's been passed by the commissioners, it's able to be enforced at any time, but the commissioners had specifically requested that we give people 24 hours' notice. I do know, I spoke with the sheriff last night, and I spoke with the chief deputy sheriff, and Chief Deputy Chris Elliott went out to the courthouse and tried to explain these rules to it. I also know that Dave Schilling, last week on Thursday, he's head of our legal department, he went out and talked to people about both of these codes last week. I also know that Dave Schilling went out today with Ms. Reese and explained these rules to the people in the courthouse. I assure you that it is not the intent of Monroe County Government to be punitive, but we are trying to equally enforce our laws so that the courthouse is clean, safe, it's kept in a healthy manner, and it is available for all people to use. When hammocks are blocking the stairways, people are, who, you know, members of the public are not able to come on the courthouse grounds. When people are defecating on the courthouse lawn, as they have been today, it is not a safe and healthy environment for our members of the public. So I can tell you that we have been working with the commissioners and the sheriff's department. We want there to be a peaceful resolution. We certainly do not want harm to come to anybody, and, but we are trying to be as fair and consistent as we possibly can in the enforcement of the local laws. And we are hopeful, again, Dave Schilling and Ms. Reese went out today and talked to people, and it is our, our hope that people will comply with the local laws. And I know that also the commissioners' office has been in touch with social service providers to try to make sure that there are places for people to go and sleep tonight. We do not think the courthouse lawn is that place for people to sleep because it isn't safe, it isn't healthy, and then it's not available for all people to use. So again, those codes are available on, on our website. We have tried to make this message clear by sending out deputies to deliver the message, by, you know, going out there and talking to people ourselves. If there's any confusion, certainly contact the legal department, that number is on the notice that is on the door. And I'm happy to entertain any questions from council members about, about this.
I, thank you, Ms. Rice. You mentioned potential disruptions being caused. That led, led me to think, are we seeing any ADA issues as a result of the encampment on the courthouse grounds?
I have not seen any myself, but that is certainly a risk. And as we know, we heard earlier today from somebody who mentioned, you know, accessibility issues, it is our goal to keep the courthouse lawn clear, to keep the walkways clear so that people can get through. I noticed the hammocks were on the south side where the stairs are, the accessible entrance to the courthouse is on the north side, but to the extent that tents and camping equipment are strung across the lawn, it certainly could provide a hindrance to somebody in terms of accessibility. So that is a concern of ours. We also have the hours in place for the courthouse lawn so that it can be maintained and cleaned, and also because it's just, it's not a good idea to have, you know, from a safety perspective, to have people there overnight. So yeah, I think accessibility is a concern.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, council members, for, for Counselor Rice? Ms. Munson?
Counselor Rice, just public comment.
Yeah, Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, thank you for being here, Ms. Rice, and for your explanation. I thought that was helpful. For the, the public record, you mentioned two individuals, Dave Schilling and Ms. Reese. Would you, would you please share with the public who these individuals are and their roles in the county?
I can. Dave Schilling is the head of the legal department. He is an attorney for Monroe County Government, has been an attorney for, I think, three decades. Mcqueeba Reese is a member of the public who commented here earlier today, and I know she's involved with the University and City of Bloomington and is involved with some of the protests. And so she and Dave had a conversation, I'm aware of, and they agreed to go out and talk to individuals in the public and try to explain the differences between Chapter 257 and 262. I also would like to clarify, there was a comment made earlier that why did the council revoke this privilege to be on the courthouse? I can tell you that this, the courthouse grounds by state law are managed by the Monroe County Commissioners. The county council has no authority over the courthouse grounds. So these laws are passed by the county commissioners, and it is the county commissioners' responsibility to the courthouse grounds in a safe manner. And so it is their direction, and again, they have been trying to make sure that the public is well-informed, that they are, that this message is being communicated. And I believe they are going to make sure, again, to communicate these messages tomorrow at their public meeting. It is our goal, again, to educate and inform the public, and, and if there's any confusion, to clear that up. But I do want to clear up any confusion about where the authority lies for the courthouse grounds, and it is not with the city council, or the county council, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Rice.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Council Attorney Rice? Ms. Munson, are you?
Yes, I do have a question. Would it be correct that people who wish to continue to protest may do so from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on the courthouse grounds?
Absolutely. And I got to say that the courthouse grounds are from the stairs up towards the courthouse. The sidewalk is open 24/7. I can also tell you that the commissioners have made it clear to me that it is not their goal to prohibit or to any, in any way discourage protests between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. That is activity that they encourage. It is certainly their, the public's right to do that, and they do not want to prohibit the protest between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. The reason that the Chapter 257 prohibits camping gear and, and camping facilities from being on the courthouse lawn is because of the reasons for public safety, as Eric Spoonmore points out, accessibility, and make it so that the courthouse is available for every member of the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for unmuting me. I just, my question is, let me just lead into it with, with a little bit. I appreciate the clarification that this was a decision between the commissioners and county legal, but what, there's obviously a lot that has transpired in the last couple weeks. There is a lot of grief, there is a lot of outrage, there is a lot of concern for safety. Ms. Rice, what assurances can be given about the safety of individuals as there's interaction with all of this? Lot of movement, protests, meeting, these ordinances that, that govern the courthouse lawn? What assurances can be offered in that, or what words could, could you, could you share with that? For people that are watching and they want to make sure that folks, this is a safe, as safe a process for Monroe County residents as possible on, on, at every level that are downtown?
Yeah, I can tell you that the commissioner- Yeah, I can tell you that the commissioners, I know I've been in touch with the sheriff's deputies, legal's been in touch with the sheriff's deputies, everybody is wanting to make sure that the, the rules are enforced consistently and fairly and in a really peaceful way. It's our hope that when people are informed that the courthouse lawn closes at 10:00 p.m. tonight, that they will peacefully leave and they will come back tomorrow at 6:00 a.m. and resume their protest, but that they will respect the fact that there has been on the books this law for some time and it has important safety and public health. We are allowed to, as a governmental entity, have reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions in place, and that's what this law is. For those people who choose not to leave, that's up to the police officer's discretion, whether they warn, whether they issue an ordinance violation, which is a $25 fine for the first time, a $75 fine for the second time, or whether they feel the need to arrest somebody for trespass. I can assure you that our police, our sheriff's department is intending to respect people's rights and to, to try to safely guard the courthouse grounds and to protect human interests at the same time. But we do have to make sure that for the public safety, that we keep the courthouse lawn clear and safe. Today, I know that Dave Schilling was out there and he was able to photograph where there was human waste. That is not at all a condition that we want for our courthouse or for the people who want to use our courthouse. So we need to have people leave so that we can clean up the courthouse and people can then safely come back tomorrow and protest.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions? Ms. Munson? We need to unmute you first, sorry.
This is my standard liaison report. Actually, it is appointed by the council to the Solid Waste Management District. I currently serve as president in this time of essential business. Of course, waste is an essential matter and we've been dealing with it. But we have opened up the recycling centers and the South Walnut, Walnut Street Recycling Center. And you can find out the hours on the website, gogreendistrict.com or by calling 812-349-2020. But essentially it is back to the normal schedule for the South Walnut Street site. It is Tuesday through Saturday. And for the rural sites, it is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, skip Thursday, and Friday, Saturday. So please, everybody, when you're visiting recycling, remember to wear face covering and watch your social distancing. Help keep our staff healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Any other council liaison updates at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next items in our agenda. But first I want, before we get into the action items and business for tonight, I want to check and see if there are any, would anybody like to address the agenda and make any changes at this time? Please, Ms. Wiltz.
Yes, I'd like to move to amend the agenda such that Item 11 can be addressed next, which I'm trying to figure out what number we're on.
We're on six.
If we could move Item 11 before number six, that would be, that would be my motion.
Okay. And so just, just for the record, Item 11 is the...
Discussion.
Yeah, it's phrased here exactly. It is the Discussion on Criminal Justice Reform Public Engagement Strategy. This relates to our previous meeting last Thursday. We have a motion on the floor.
Do we, I will offer a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll open it up now for discussion among council members. I saw Ms. Hawk had her hand raised.
Will we be taking public comment on that?
Not an emotion.
On that item?
Well, we, we, we will.
So I, my, my concern is I, this, I don't think anybody wants to rush anyone through this. And we have an item on there where we have people that we're trying to encourage bringing jobs here, and I certainly think that we should show the respect of those people who are, they're, they're going to be one, they're going to be very quickly. And this, this item you're talking about was just put on very recently. The other people have been on the agenda and been waiting their turn to be addressed. And just out of respect for making sure that the public understands we're supporting jobs and the people who are bringing the jobs here for everyone. And so I, I think it's rather disrespectful not to hear them first as, as the agenda has it. And then, and then move the other one up right after that one, if you'd like.
Would you like me to amend my motion? Would that be appropriate?
That would be very lovely. I would do that.
Okay.
You see where the one, you see the, the item I'm speaking at?
Yes.
As it needs to be heard.
So I would like to amend the, I'm amending my motion to include moving number seven, which is, I believe, the one that Counselor Hawk is referring to, tax abatement application? Is that correct?
Right, and I don't have the item in front of me. I've been in class all day.
It is seven. I would like to move Item 7 and 11 in that order, 7 then 11, up to the very next slot on our agenda, which would be just before number six.
I amend my second.
Is that, is that the correct procedural process for this? I don't know.
I think so.
That, that's fine.
It's of minimal importance.
Okay, yeah. So we've got a, a motion and an amended motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the amended motion? Do we have any public comment on the amended motion? None? Okay, so we need to take a roll call vote?
Okay, go ahead.
Counselor Deckard?
A moment.
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spunmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we will now move on to Item 7 and then we will go back to Item 11.
Okay, so go to Item 7 and just put the time there.
And do we have our, so this is a tax abatement application? And I'll let...
Counsel, yeah, I am moved to approve Resolution 2020-25A, Part 1, Preliminary Approval of Tax Abatement for Proveli, Inc.
I'm muted.
Second.
There we go.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I believe Mr. Cockrell is here with county legal to give some additional background. I don't... Mr. Cockrell?
Hmm.
Anybody from the commissioner's office?
Okay, there, I finally muted. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, and there are several members from the, from the business that are, that are here as well. I, I guess, I'll give you a little bit of background. Essentially, we just went through this similar, from a prospect perspective, we went through a, the similar situation a few months ago with the Ernest Health Tax Abatement Application. So the process is somewhat familiar to you guys, but I'll, I'll recount it anyway. Are the, for this one, the EDC has already met and...
It has, we'll just put the time.
And have gotten a positive recommendation from the Economic Development Commission. It goes to this, this county council for a preliminary approval of the tax abatement. Then it will go to the RDC, 18th meeting, and then the county commissioners before it would come back to the county council at your regular July meeting to have a public hearing and a final approval of the ERA designation and tax abatement. So this is kind of step two of six or seven steps, but, but it's a good chance for us to kind of let you know what the business is, let them introduce what their, what their plans are and what they would, what they're requesting a tax abatement for, so we can move forward and, and see if, see where this goes. I guess one of the things that always come, a question that always comes up, and I like to address it even before we have the company, is they are proposing to add 54 new positions to a current operation in the county. And so, and where, this one is located in the West Side Tiff District. I'll let the, the company kind of tell you more about themselves and where they're at and what they do, they're better at than I am. So if, Michelle, if you could, I believe unmute, I believe Clark Griner is going to introduce the, the business group, and I'm trying to find his name.
Can you say the name for me one more time?
Clark Griner.
Okay, one moment, please.
And Mr. Griner is with the EDC. We also have Jen Pearl here with the EDC. And then I believe we have some, the, the company representatives, not sure who their names are, but we'll get those here from, from either Jen or Clark here soon, I'm sure.
Well, hello, can you, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. My name's Clark Griner. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for moving up the schedule so that we could present Proveli. What I'd like to do is just go ahead and make some, some introductions. Again, my name's Clark Griner. I'm with the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation and I'm pleased to introduce and publicly welcome Proveli and the Proveli team to Monroe County. So first, let me introduce who some of these folks are going to be. Mr. Reinhard Seifert, he is an owner of Proveli. The next is Mr. Thomas Seifers, he is an owner. And then in addition, there'll be Gary Higgy, he is the CFO with Proveli. And then we also have Mr. Ben Worrell, he's with Maguire Sponsel and a strategic advisor for Proveli. I just wanted to make everyone aware, Jeff gave a great overview of this. Proveli has made a strategic investment in Monroe, in Monroe County, and as a result, they are seeking a tax abatement for future investments in real and personal property. And as a result of this investment, Proveli is, is going to be hiring quite a few Monroe County residents. I'll let those details be described a little bit later in this. But Proveli has a rich history in this industry. They are a high-quality advanced manufacturer of signs and they fabricate, install, as well as design these signs. And again, we'd really like to welcome them to our community. And now I'll just turn the mic over to Ben Worrell and the Proveli team and they can talk and give the specific details about that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Griner. Welcome, Mr. Worrell.
Thank you, council members. I'll try to keep the presentation as brief as possible. I know we had provided a, a document that we could go through for the, for the purposes of this presentation. I also want to respect everyone's time as I know there's other important, impressive issues that, that you're faced with that members of the public may have some additional commentary to. So I will try to be brief, but I do want to maintain the excitement for what this project brings to us. This is certainly some trying times that we're all faced with. So certainly whenever we hear about a company that's looking to grow and expand, that's something to celebrate and, and ideally something that, that we'd like to see your support on. So if we can go to the, the first slide in the presentation here, please. It's a brief introduction of the company and then I will ask you just a little bit for Mr. Seifers to talk a little bit more about their company as they are the founders of this organization. And I think just have a great story to share with you about why they're excited about coming to Monroe County and, and what they're bringing here. So just a brief overview, Proveli founded in 2004, 2005 in the Atlanta, Georgia area. Currently have about 45 employees that are there and as Clark had mentioned before, from the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation and who's been a great partner with us through this process here. So we thank both Jen and Clark and their guidance through the, the initial steps here as we present this to you. Proveli has a very strong foothold in the southeastern United States currently from their headquarters inside of Atlanta. And the excitement of what they bring here to this situation is that their manufacturing focus will be coming to the Bloomington, Monroe County area. There is an existing organization that many of you may be familiar with, Hall Signs, has been a fixture inside of the community for over 70 years. And through a strategic relationship and the opportunity that presented itself, Proveli was able to acquire Hall Signs and is, is looking to continue to maintain that operation, not only just maintain it, but enhance it and enhance it in a significant way by, by almost tripling the amount of employees that are there. Hall Signs currently has approximately 30 individuals that are there. And with the future growth that, that Proveli is considering, the tremendous opportunities that are presented both in the Midwest market as well as their, their focus to look out further into the rest of the continental United States, the opportunity to have a, a main hub that is centrally located inside the United States for the manufacturing process of both mailboxes and street signs. Bloomington and Monroe County just presented the ideal opportunity for that. So I will just take a step back. If we can advance to the next slide here, it'll just give a brief overview of some of the areas that, that Proveli has been in. And then Reinhard, I'm not sure if, if you're going to be presenting here, but if you wouldn't mind talking about, a little bit further about what you've planned here for, for Monroe County.
Absolutely. My brother, Thomas, is also on here. Somebody could possibly allow him to start his video, Thomas Seifers, and unmute him as well. That'd be great. Thank y'all very much for having us. Thank you, Ben, for kicking this off. Good to see some familiar faces from the last meeting. You know, super excited to see all y'all around town as well. My brother and I, we founded this business 15 years ago. We always wanted to get into business together and we said, what does everybody in America need? And we went through a laundry list of items and next thing you know, we came up with, everybody needs a mailbox. And so we started a residential mailbox business, literally assembling mailboxes, welding them together and going out and installing them. And how this started was we went to Home Depot and bought a kit welder and we went to Georgia Steel and bought some steel pipe and we bought some brackets. We went over my brother's sun porch and we welded them together. And some of y'all have heard this story, but literally we were so proud of what we had built and then we leaned up against it and it broke. We quickly realized we weren't using the right kind of flux cord and the flux wire that we needed to get the metals to melt together. And so, you know, we had to go back to Home Depot and how we figured it out was getting a VHS tape from Home Depot, learning how to weld. And that's just how we got started. And we, we quickly, quickly learned that, you know, there were a lot of mom and pop businesses that we could potentially even acquire. So we started acquiring just small books of businesses and other businesses. We kind of found we had a knack for that. We grew, we've grown organically as well through acquisition over the years. And next thing you know, this opportunity in Bloomington, Indiana pops up and we're like, hey, let's look at this. And our company, the name of it's Proveli. And what we do is we bring, our tagline is, we bring attention to the curb. So think about the products, like you can see here on the screen, we manufacture products as if you're driving down the road, you see... We manufacture products as if you're driving down the road, you see them. You know, here's a stop sign. This is a decorative street sign. We manufacture real estate sign systems, manufacture sign frames and residential mailboxes. And now Bloomin- here in Bloomington is one of the largest traffic sign manufacturers in the United States, Hall Signs. And so that one popped up, and we said, wow. And they've been a business seventy years. I don't know if anybody on this call knows Wayne or Larry Hall or Patsy. They started the business across the street from Grant Street Inn in a little two-story garage. So it's similar kind of story to us. And Wayne and Patsy and Larry, they built this business and you know, they're approved applicator for three M. And so our goal is is we said, we need a manufacturing facility. We need somewhere that we can manufacture. And we thought that in the Midwest, it was a great area. I mean, a great spot to to manufacture. And it was a business that was already up and running. And our vision is to raise the bar in the workplace and in the marketplace within the industry we exist. So not only do we want to do raise the bar in the work marketplace, but also in the workplace. We want to challenge the status quo in terms of being a great place to work. And we know that people coming out of IU, they are going to be demanding and a really great place to work. And we want those students rather than getting on airplane and going back home and getting jobs. We want to start a management trainee program where we can get some of those students to come and work for us. We're we really like the college town. My brother went to University of Georgia. And it's in Athens, Georgia, and he could really relate to just the town of Athens and the town of Bloomington. Monroe County has so much to offer. You know, we've both been out exploring like just Monroe Lake and different places, different trails, and there's so much to offer. And we knew we've looked at a lot of businesses to acquire, but we we said, okay, we need to buy a business that's in a town that will also allow us to attract talent and where people want to live. And everybody that we talked to said, if you're going to live in the Midwest, here are a couple towns. If you're going to live in Indiana, Bloomington is where you want to live. And Monroe County has so much to offer. So we know we can attract the right talent here. Just today, we've been negotiating to bring on an operations manager, which is a high, high level executive position. This person's bringing their family. They live an hour and a half away. And we turned down somebody recently because they weren't going to move to Bloomington. They wanted to live forty five minutes away. They wanted to live south of Indianapolis and drive down. And we just said, no, we want you to be part of the community. We we've looked at a lot of different places. We're from Troup County in Georgia. So you know, they love this is I shouldn't say a joke right now. That's not the right time. They do not like us thinking about moving our manufacturing facility to Bloomington and to Monroe County. But you know, we said, everything we've done in Monroe County has been a it's been easy to do business with. And that being said, that's why we want to be here. The majority of our products, just another thing, jobs, we are going to have high tech jobs where, you know, bringing people from the technical college into work, keeping the jobs here and hiring a lot more people in this area and bringing people into the county to to work. I think you know, our vision of raising the bar in the workplace and the marketplace, this county allows us to do that. It supports us, and we're just super excited. We're we we are already looking at other acquisitions. And if, you know, if we acquire somebody in a different state, those jobs will come to Monroe County. And whenever we look to, and that's going to allow us to expand the building and expand our entire footprint here. So I don't know if Thomas has anything to add, but that's high level about us. And thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak. And I'm sure I'm over my three minutes.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for your time as well. You can obviously hear his excitement and my excitement. We're relatively young guys who feel like we found our manufacturing home and look forward to to continuing to grow this business. So becoming becoming a continuing to be a household name around Monroe County.
Well, thank you all very much for the for the excellent presentation and information. I want to check with our council members now and see if there are any questions or comments that council would like to make. And it looks I see Ms. Munson's hand first and then Mr. Iverson.
Hello there. I'm very interested in raising the bar for the workplace and the compensation as well. And I wanted to ask about the management trainees. Are these in addition to the the ten administrative personnel that you plan to bring in over the next four years?
Yes, and this would be an ongoing. We we always think we just have to bring people in. I mean, the the it's kind of it kind of works both ways. So yes, absolutely. We need the young people to come in and teach us new things, and we need to teach them about leadership.
Yes. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Great. Mr. Iverson and then Mr. Decker.
Thomas Reinhardt, thank you so much for your presentation today. Thank you for taking the time to be with us. As you heard from staff, this is a lengthy process. So thank you for jumping through these hoops. We are very excited that you're going to be coming here to Monroe County. We think it's a great place to be, not only because of the natural beauty that you pointed out, but you are coming to the place with the number one business school in the nation. And of course, the just the the brilliance that's coming out of Indiana University and Ivy Tech in Bloomington every single year is is just fantastic. So we're excited to see that footprint grow. And thank you again for your time and what you're doing.
Thank you for having us. Thanks for the comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Decker.
Thank you very much. And thanks for being here and and talk discussing your business and your and your plans for Monroe County. In a previous life, I spent a lot of time chasing partners and donors and supporters and sponsors for local not for the local not-for-profit community when I was with the United Way. And so whenever I get a chance or sometimes when I get a chance and get folks like yourself here with us, the question I like to ask is, you know, we have a lot of needs in the community. What kind of neighbor in business interacting with our local social services, interacting with local things that you do beyond your your day-to-day business? Have you done in the past, or would you be interested in doing here? And it's kind of an open-ended question, but everybody here has three or four things they do beyond going to work and helping out. So I'd love to hear more on that.
Absolutely. Thomas, I don't know if you want to field some of this as well. It's interesting how our business.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was.
Well, one of the ways that we grew our business initially is we donated a mailbox along with installation to a private school auction. And it was through that we had no idea that we'd actually, you know, that would be a key part in forming our business. I'm on the board of nonprofit CalPCE Foundation. Thomas serves on multiple committees and boards as well. In terms of being involved in the community, I mean, we're we're here. I'm sitting here now looking to move my family up here. And I do think over time, we'll we'll do more and more. There's what exactly do we do in the community in Atlanta? Thomas, you want to field this a little bit?
Yeah, am I am I muted now? Yeah. So so I think number one, we try to listen to employees. Employees bring a lot of opportunities to support the community. We're starting to get some of those here for certain. We've definitely done volunteer days as a company. You know, I think I think we're very charitable as a company and definitely to local organizations. I could see us supporting organizations here. Be frank, we kind of got derailed a little bit. We bought the company. And then eighty days into it or so, COVID broke out, and it's really kind of changed a lot of the rollout plans and things like that. So, you know, I see that as a challenge from you, and I definitely look forward to you know, to to making our mark here. I think I think you'll see our name around for sure.
Well, if you think about things that we've done in the past, we got everybody in our company to do a run for breast cancer. We, you know, these are things where we got everybody, and we said, hey, on Saturday morning, go out and do this kind of thing. And we can already see a lot of things that we want to be involved in. Being on the hiking trail yesterday, I was like, you know, we need to donate signs for this trail because here I am out there at eight thirty at night, and I was I was worried I wasn't going to make it to this meeting. I was like, I I better get back to my car because it's getting dark in the side. And I felt like the trail needed some signs. And those are things where Thomas and I were natural natural caretakers, helpers, that kind of thing. I mean, just whenever we walked in the door here, we bought the business, somebody said, hey, can you make a donation? There was a child here in town with MS, and his parents were putting on an event. Thank you. And we're like, yeah. And then we donated, you know, money towards that. We have already been hanging banners up for baseball teams. We've been we've we supported a baseball team. We make donations to IU. We, you know, we've done stuff already just from being here. And we a hundred percent will expand on that. And there's certain things and that you want us to do, reach out.
I'm sure people will. Thank you.
We want to try to help.
Great. Mr. McCam.
Yes, Mr. Cypher's, Mr. Cypher's, great to see you again. I enjoyed the presentation at the Economic Development Commission meeting the other day, and just wanted to reiterate our welcome to Monroe County. We're excited that you want to invest in in the community here. And so I was just wondering if real briefly, you could describe the investment that that you'd be making that you are seeking, actually seeking to have the the assessed value, increase in assessed value abated on.
Ben, do you want to head up a little bit of that here, just if we can advance the presentation, probably three or four slides here?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make you jump ahead if you.
No, no, that's 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 right, because I think that is kind of where we're getting to. This is the perfect right here. This is the the projected investment. Again, these are all rough numbers. These are estimates for the future. If I always like to say on projects like this, if we had the crystal ball and could look five years in the future and understand when or if the next COVID nineteen would happen, we probably wouldn't be doing the jobs we are in today. So these are these are obviously estimates for the future, but certainly what you can see from here, almost over four million dollars worth of investment. This is this is what where the company would like to be going. And as Reinhardt had mentioned earlier, with some of the acquisitions that may be available in the future, with some of the the future opportunities that are out there as far as market share is concerned, certainly, they would they would hope that as as things continue to lighten up here, or as the economy hopefully continues to open up, that they could make some some additional investments. And Thomas and Reinhardt, I didn't mean to jump in in front of you there, but I know we did have this this as a part of our presentation. And obviously, what's being considered today, what's in front of you today is is the consideration of the economic revitalization area. So it's simply designating the area that that Hall Signs would be in that helps to open up the toolbox for additional incentive opportunities.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Hawk.
I've been trying to leave myself on mute because my puppy dog wants to get involved with this conversation. I wanted to say welcome. Hall Signs and the and my friends that worked at Hall Signs for decades, some of them are my neighbors. And I remember when they were very near that trailer court, and Martha Hall was very much the leader there, a woman running a business, Javell. So I just want to welcome you to Monroe County. Your location is right there in my district, and so I especially appreciate that as well. I look forward to all the new people that will be coming to join us here in Monroe County. I hope they'll have students who will join us over in the Richland Bean Blossom School District because we need that head count. But we know how much it means to the people in this county to have a diversity of jobs that they will be able to have an opportunity to provide really a great lifestyle for the family. And so thank you so much for considering Monroe County. It's a beautiful place. You will not be disappointed.
Absolutely. We're excited about bringing jobs. We just recently, somebody got laid off from IU. And I say laid off, I don't know if that's the right terminology, but their job position is not there right now. And it was because of COVID nineteen. And we we employed that person in a purchasing role. And so we're doing everything we can to, we want to keep jobs in the county as well as, you know, bring people in and give them good jobs.
Right. Wonderful.
Yeah, and I I just want to follow on to to what Counselor Hawks said. This is very exciting. And very much appreciate your desire and interest in investing in Monroe County. I think you won't be disappointed at all. We have terrific people here, a great workforce. And I think that you'll find that Monroe County will help your company be even more successful in the future. And so we're we're happy to to partner with you on that. So I'm looking forward to the continued conversations and just want to say thanks so much for for your willingness and interest in investing in Monroe County.
Thank you.
Are there any further discussion or comments at this point, or are we ready to to go ahead and take action on this? Okay, why don't we? I'm sorry, Mr. McCam.
Yeah, I just I don't know if Mr. Cockrell is still on, but just for the benefit of the public and maybe some of my colleagues who haven't gone through this as many times, can you describe the structure of the tax abatement real briefly?
No.
Well, by structure, I assume you mean typically, and what they're asking for today is a ten-year tax abatement. And that's on a graduated scale. So like, year one of the tax abatement would have a hundred percent deferral of taxes, and then the taxes would be then kind of phased in over the next ten years. So it goes essentially ten hundred percent abated, ninety percent, eighty percent, seventy percent, and then after ten years, it would be it would be fully taxable. The percentages are a little bit different when you're dealing with personal or real property, but I think I think that's kind of the structure of of what we're looking at.
And then just, yes, and then just to make it clear, and I'm really, I'm only being, you know, going over this just because there are a lot of members of the public, I know, I know, listening to this. When we're talking about the taxes abated, what we're really talking about is abating the as or deferring the assessed value of the new investment they're making. So it doesn't suddenly make what used to be Hall Signs tax-free for a year. It's it's simply the deferring the new assessed value that's being created by this investment.
It's only it's only deferring the increase in the assessed value due to the investment.
I look at, am I on? I look at as growing the taxes. Every year, the taxes will be more.
Yes.
Start out at one base, and every year goes, they'll be paying more taxes, not less. That may not sound good to the business people, but that's the way it works.
All right. Anything further? None? Or is there any public comment on this item? And I can't see if we have anybody interested.
I think there is.
The time to call a question?
No, so there is somebody.
See Jen and Randy?
Yes, it looks like Jen will be first.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hi, Jen. Please go ahead when you're ready. Or when you're able.
My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We are a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in supporting employers and attracting jobs here as well as growing jobs for all Monroe County residents in our region. We are so delighted to be working with Pervelli. You heard from Clark Greiner on our team earlier in the call. We first got to meet the Pervelli team in early fall. And this is an exciting project in normal circumstances because it's expanding, you know, homegrown business and and in a very future-focused way. But it's also just given the timing of everything that our community is facing right now, we're very excited to be supporting this at this time. Something that really struck us when we first. Something that really struck us when we first met with the Proveli team was how much they really invested in understanding the community, getting to know people. Before our team sat down with them, they had even spent several days just walking around town, meeting people, talking to people at restaurants that they, you know, had met and just getting their sense of life here. And that's been really clear in our conversations moving forward with them. You know, sometimes when you get acquisitions, it goes a different direction. But this is an instance in which case you can really see just the care that they're putting into the community here. So, you know, Reinhardt and Thomas and Gary and the whole team there, we're, we're really grateful for this chance to help to welcome you to the community. Our team has also been working with them to connect to local workforce resources to make sure that we're getting job opportunities out to the people that need them. And I also just want to give a shout out to the enthusiastic promotion that they've been doing of our community as well. We've worked with our partners over at Visit Bloomington to get multiple stacks of materials about our community that Proveli has asked for, that they can pass along to their team as well to help their team better understand our community. So just wanted to say thank you to the council for considering this. Thank you to the Proveli team. Thank you to Ben over at McGuire's council. And we just, we just appreciate the consideration.
Well, thank you, Jen and Clark as well too, for all your great work that you do here. And we look forward to, to seeing you again at another council meeting in the future with, with more of this kind of great news. So thank you.
And I didn't know if Clark had anything to add or if there was an order of speakers too, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Greiner.
Well, Jen did such a complete job on that. I don't know if I have anything that I can really add to that, other than the BEDC obviously supports this initiative and stuff. And I think one of the things that's, that's really telling, when you get into the compassion of this business and the, kind of the heart and soul, what, what I heard Reinhardt and Thomas talking about, those are the types of cultural types of organizations we really want to make part of our community, and specifically Monroe County. So we do want to welcome them. I want to say also thank you again to the council members for taking the time and, and all that this considers for, for our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Have any, any further public comment on this item? Looks like Mr. Paul has a comment to make. Hello, sir.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is the second time I've heard this presentation and it's impressive and I think it's exciting. And I agree with everybody to, to welcome them in the community. Twice I've heard the phrase diversity of jobs and raising the bar of jobs, which is exciting. I'm just wondering though, have you thought about, this is for the owners of the company, the need and responsibility to reach out to minority groups, people with disabilities, to make sure they have access and training to the jobs you're bringing in, particularly like the management training program you talked about? Just what are your thoughts about, you know, the unemployment rate for minority groups, handicapped or people with disabilities is much higher than the average population? Do you see an opportunity here to work to help in that direction?
I would say, I would say, first of all, disabilities are very close to both of our hearts. I've been very involved with Shepherd's Spinal Center here in Atlanta for many years. Reinhardt's currently on the board of the Cow Peace Foundation, which is a foundation for people with cerebral palsy and basically allowing those people to still live out their dreams of being athletes, although their bodies are not of a typical athlete. I'm happy to give you my email. I would love to connect or if it's through Jen, to learn more about those opportunities because absolutely, today's jobs, right? Technology has made, has really created a lot of accessibility for jobs. One of the things that we're doing is allowing for, you know, more flexible work arrangements. So a lot of people can work from home and work different hours and things. And so I think it'd play very well. And to be frank, we're looking for sharp people who can come in and help us raise the bar and help execute. And we are open to anyone and everyone who can do that. So I would, I'd love to, you know, again, my email is thomas@proveli.com. Send me an email. Love to connect.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
It looks like there's one more in one moment, please. All right, Samantha, whenever you're ready.
Welcome. Could you please state your name for the record?
Hi, sorry, I'm trying to get my camera to work and apparently it cannot. So I just want to kind of build off of the last comment. You mentioned your current work and interest in working with individuals with different accessibilities. But I also urge you to stay on the call for the next conversation that we're going to be having because we've had extensive conversations in the community about the ways in which Black and Brown folks are treated. And since I didn't hear that mentioned at all in how you think about minoritized populations for your workforce, it would be really beneficial for y'all to be educated on that as well.
Absolutely. Happy to, happy to stay on the call. And yeah, I mean, absolutely. I, I, we haven't had that as a challenge in our organization. We, you know, if you, yeah, we, but I'd love to stay on the call and hear more. And we're definitely open to hiring minorities. We do a lot and that's a large part of our workforce.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay.
A question?
Yes. We are ready for a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve Revolution 2020 dash twenty-five A, Part One, Preliminary Approval of Tax Abatement for Provali Inc., Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now, as a result of the Ms. Wiltz's earlier motion, we're going to move item eleven, which is a discussion on criminal justice reform, public engagement strategy, to our next item or discussion. And I'll just give a little background here for the public before we get started. So this was a, this resulted from our meeting on Thursday that we had. And, well, we had a large gathering here on Zoom where we received a great deal of constructive feedback concerning how Monroe County government should resource its various law enforcement operations. An outcome from that meeting that we held on Thursday was the council's commitment to hold an event that would focus on listening to and understanding the community's concerns and ideas for how law enforcement interacts with the community. One of the key components for this initiative that I really want to emphasize is the importance of collaborating with our community members to plan and execute an event that will serve to spur meaningful change and innovation within county government. And perhaps the most important role for the council right now is to listen and to especially listen and learn from those who are most vulnerable in our community and so often underrepresented in these important conversations. So at this point, I would like to suggest that we hold an event on the evening of Tuesday, June thirtieth. That would be three weeks from today. And I think that would and should provide sufficient time to plan and to conduct the critical outreach efforts that will be necessary to hearing and truly understanding the public sentiment on this issue. And so when we had adjourned last Thursday, that was the, the consensus, I think, that we came to as what we would want to determine here at this meeting tonight was a date and a time that we could have this event. And so my suggestion would be Tuesday, June thirtieth in the evening, maybe starting around six PM Eastern Time. Just wanted to put that out there for discussion and curious as to what other council members believe. And we'll also be taking input from the public on this as well too. We'll, we'll still continue to operate within our framework for public comment, which is a three minutes. And please indicate your, your, your desire to speak on this by raising your hand in the chat feature and we'll be sure to call on you in the order that it was received. So are there any questions or comments from council? We'll start there first and then before we make a decision, we'll, we'll absolutely entertain any public comments. Mr. Iverson, yes?
Yeah, President Spoonmore, I really want to commend you for taking such quick action on this. I think it is very important that we have taken this step as a body and in conjunction with different county offices, including the commissioners. And I think that, that we hopefully are sending a very clear message here that Black Lives Matter, that we are, as part of county government, we are in a position of privilege. We recognize that and we are reaching out to hear public comments. I'm also encouraged by our colleagues up in Indianapolis who had a robust conversation about racism as a public health issue. And I think that the conversations that we are having and are going to have in Monroe County are going to be very fruitful. And so I'm, I'm very much looking forward to this and I think it's a positive step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from council on this item? Ms. Wiltz?
Are we, will we be able to comment after we hear from the public as well?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna hang out. I do appreciate you suggesting a date and moving forward with this really important issue.
Okay. All right, are there, are there any, Mr. Deckard, did I see your hand? Yes, sir.
I, I'm a lot like Kate. I'd like to hear from the public. I definitely think that we, as, as we figure out the, the components of the meeting, as, as some of us have, have talked informally here and there about what this could look like, I think we need to be mindful that sometimes a government meeting is, as they were originally designed, is not the most articulate way that you get representation of, of, of public opinion and public engagement, particularly on issues that are overdue for those discussions. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that public comment today can further illustrate, you know, some thoughts that folks have on this, but that we're extremely mindful that a government meeting as is, isn't always the best way to, to fully capture that and that we, I know there's been discussion about some mediation and some facilitation so that folks feel like it's a safe place, that we're not relying on just monolithic labels of representation, but we're truly letting members of the community engage this and ultimately get what they are looking for in public policy. And that is reform that they can see, that they can feel and that they feel comfortable with. And I keep coming back to what I've said a couple of times, there's so much grief and there's so much outrage that we have seen in this community and other communities. And this is just what we're going through and we've got to, as leaders, get through it. So I'll stop talking, I already talked too much. I'm excited to hear from the public.
Any other questions, comments from council right now before we move on to public comment on this item? All right, do we have any members of the public who would like to address the council?
First will be Nathan Muchler. Go ahead when you're ready.
Welcome, Mr. Muchler.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council for moving promptly forward with this. I know that three weeks can seem like an eternity, but in local government, that is a very aggressive timetable and I appreciate that. I think that having this conversation is critical and like the previous counselor said, a government meeting can be a strange and difficult and intimidating place. So any steps the council can make to make that a welcoming pace, welcoming place and a safe space for a variety of voices is appreciated. And I would encourage and challenge the council to expend resources, making sure people are aware of this and that it is marketed to and engaged with the community. Thank you and I yield my time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Who would like to speak next?
Next we have Samantha Silverstein.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, I realized I didn't introduce myself last time. My name's Samantha. I lived here in Monroe County for the last four years and I'm a PhD student at IU Bloomington. So first, I, I appreciate the, the swift action that was taken to schedule this meeting as has already been said. I think community voice on this topic is really important, especially when we consider who currently has the power in our council as all white individuals and who is holding no power and is actually needing their voices to be heard. And I also appreciate your honesty about how oftentimes these council spaces are not the safest for individuals or the most easily accessible. I for one only heard about this meeting through another organization. I did not hear about it through the council. I have no, I don't know how to access council information. So I think that that's something that should be more readily available. I'm not sure if there's a listserv that you all have or something that people can be added to, but it would be nice to hear about these meetings from the horse's mouth as well and not just from external groups. A couple of questions that I do have for you all as you're thinking about planning this meeting is, so far, the, the goals that you all have stated for it are very vague to me. And that concerns me because I think we've heard these vague goals from every organization out there right now about having these conversations and making change and the importance of listening to Black voices. But what does that actually mean? And how are you all actually open to making the changes that your public is asking for and not just holding a meeting? I want to actually know, are you willing to reappropriate funds to other, to other groups other than the police? Are you open to restructuring what police training looks like and who, who has access and oversight to review police officers? And when you're planning this meeting for June thirtieth, whose voices are going to be at the table? I say this because we're also dealing with in the city of Bloomington, which is part of Monroe County, we've seen that people are cherry picked for committees, people are cherry picked for task forces. And then the message that is shared is inaccurate, offensive and downright racist, as we've seen right now with the Bloomington Farmers Market and their inclusive group that they created that has posted racist comments before. So I want to make sure that whatever action you are planning is actually incorporating the voices of the people and is not just being cherry picked because they represent a nice, minoritized population, if you will. So those are just some considerations I think are really important.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Silverstein. We've noted your questions and individual council members will be able to reply to you. If you want to provide your email address to the, to our council office, I'm sure we'd be, folks would be more than happy to get back in touch with you. Any further comments?
There's Sarah Erickson.
Okay. Welcome.
Hello. I would like to thank Samantha for her comments to make sure that this meeting is structured and as productive as possible. I'd highly recommend connecting with organizations in our community who are led by people of color and who are deeply affected by these. in our community who are led by people of color and who are deeply affected by these issues. I'd also like to say that while I have little knowledge of local government, and I appreciate the comments that this is a strict time schedule and that you are being aggressive, I'd like to reemphasize and have every council member hear that every minute counts, and there are people dying, and you have a chance to work hard, to work quickly, to push these things up, and to make a difference and set an example for communities around us. So I urge you all to look inside yourselves, convene, journal, reflect, and decide if three weeks is as soon as possible. And if you are working hard enough for what is truly a safety and health issue for so many of your community members, the community that you serve. So thank you, and I appreciate your attention to deciding if that timeline is aggressive enough very specifically. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson, for your comments. Any further public comment on this item?
Yes, we have a individual from 47404.
Okay. Could you please state your name for the public records, please?
Hi, my name is Morning Wilder. I am glad that there will be a meeting. I want to ask that whatever format and structure it takes, that it's quite open-ended. A lot of people have a lot of different ideas and opinions about what should happen, and I hope that it's not framed in such a way that it limits the type of conversation that's had. So I would not be happy if it was, how do you want the police to do this thing, but rather, like, how do you envision the community? Or something that's very broad, that doesn't narrow down the ideas and possibilities that exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilder, for your comments. Any further public comment on this item?
It looks like Cal would like to speak.
Okay. Would you please state your name for the public record?
Yep. So I'm Cal, and I wanted to echo the concerns about timing. So three weeks out, the question that I have is, I know this all came to a head when the sheriff was wanting to do a hiring process. That got tabled for that time, but I'm wondering, is that now going to be tabled for these three weeks? And would ask that if it is going to be a three-week period, it would make sense to me that all money spent on law enforcement, related to law enforcement in any way, would be tabled until after that period. Otherwise, my fear, and I think the fear of a lot of people in the public, would be that things would be pushed through between now and then, that then would be irrevocable, that, well, we have these hires in place, we're doing, you know, we have these, you know, we've already decided to spend this money or those sorts of things. That's one thing I wanted to point out. And then just a couple of comments on process. One was that I noticed, it makes sense, the sheriff isn't part of the council, so he's not here today. But I just wanted to say, I hope that someone talked with him about his nonverbals when black women were speaking at the last meeting. I know that said more to me than really anything else did at that meeting. And I understand that, you know, people show nonverbals in different ways. It wasn't exclusive to those individuals. But I really think that all of us as white people need to be doing a better job of giving all of our attention and focus to people of color, and especially to black women, when they're doing so much emotional labor for us. And so that kind of distracted nonverbals was really concerning to me. And it's also a little bit telling to me that coming into this meeting, comments were shut down, and that also, at one point, I tried to make, to say something with, by holding up a sign, and that was immediately shut down as well. And so just wanting to encourage some internal reflection on how these spaces are structured, and feeling like last time, there, you know, was a lot more ability for us to engage as members of the public, and that was much more limited this time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any further public comments on this item?
Looks like there's a Daniel Bingham.
Hello, Mr. Bingham.
Hello.
Welcome.
Good year. Hi, my name's Daniel Bingham. I live on the west side of Bloomington. I wanted to echo some of the other comments made, urging you to make sure that the government doesn't come, that you all don't come to this public engagement with preconceived notions about what it should result in, with goals for what the public should decide. That is one of the biggest ways that public engagement processes often fail, is that the members of the government come to it with their own preconceived notions about what policy they're hoping to achieve. I would also, I would encourage you to come to it with a lot of data, though. And to sort of prime what kind of data might be useful, I've been looking recently into clearance rates for various crimes, and I've only been able to find national numbers. I haven't been able to find local numbers. It would be really helpful if you guys could bring these numbers for the Monroe County Sheriff's Department, along with numbers about arrest disparities, use of force, complaints. I mean, I'm sure if you, if you put out a survey, others can, can bring other statistics that would be helpful to the decision-making process. But the things that I found that really caught me off guard were the clearance rates for crimes nationally. These are the arrest rates. These are the number of cases in which arrests are actually made by the police on average nationally. The highest rate for a category of crime is murder, and it's 60%. That's the rate of case, the number, the percentage of cases in which an arrest is actually made, not in which a conviction is achieved. So that means you've got about a coin flip's chance of getting away with murder in this country. That was the highest clearance rate for any category of crime. For aggravated assault, it was about 50%. For rape, it was 30%, and that's for reported cases, not unreported cases. For property crimes, it was even lower. The average across all violent crimes was 45%. The average across property crimes was 17%. You have a better than four in five chance of getting away with a property crime in this country. The police aren't working. And so we need to come to this discussion, that like, they're not doing what we think they're doing. And in any other profession, that would be considered abject failure. And anybody working that business would fail, anybody doing that job would get fired. So we should come to this completely open-minded about not just reforming, but dismantling the police and replacing it with something else. Because what we're doing is not working. We should bring these stats locally to see, so we can see exactly what our local department is achieving. And we should all try to come to the table with an understanding that what we are doing is not working, and we need to try something new. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment?
It looks like there's a Rebecca Fock.
Okay.
Hello. Here, I'll turn on my video. Hi. Actually, piggybacking on what Daniel just said, I want to encourage council members in the next three weeks to do some homework, not just locally on local data and statistics, but also maybe read some books about what people have, who have been working on prison abolition have been writing. And so you could start with Angela Davis's, Our Prison's Obsolete, Michelle Alexander, The New Jim Crow, Carceral Capitalism by Jackie Wang. I mean, there are so many, The End of Policing, Who Do You Serve? Who Do You Protect? Policing the Planet. There are endless lists, especially right now, that are circulating about how to make sure you know what the different terms mean and what people are actually talking about when they're talking about abolition versus reform. And so I just want to underscore that it's important for us to do the work, but it's also important for you to do the work and come with a solid idea of what is being talked about right now amongst not just us, but the entire country. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comment?
Okay, there's El Gore.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. I just wanted to contribute the point that the timeline is sort of already a failure because last week was too late in terms of, you know, Sheriff Swain commented that he happened to like bring his proposal for extra sheriffs to the table a month ago, which is after the Sean Reed murder by IMPD in Indianapolis. So basically, I'm just curious if the council realizes that they let Brad Swain watch a murder on, you know, on camera by IMPD in Indianapolis, and come to your council in Monroe County with a proposal to hire yet more sheriffs. And also, does this council happen to know that in November 21st, 2019, Sheriff Brad Swain had to fire a sergeant for coming to work drunk multiple times? Sheriffs in this county, I looked at your budget, our budget, the budget of the people who pay the taxes in the county, sergeants get paid $58,000 a year. So I don't know if the proposal that he was bringing was for sergeants or deputies, but a deputy gets paid $53,000 a year. And so I'm thinking two times 53 is a lot of money that could be spent on, on, you know, things that aren't police. It could be almost anything else. I urge the council to like, use your imagination and try to, try to grasp that last week was too late, a month ago was too late, three weeks from now is like, basically a joke to us. And it's like, pretty humiliating for me as a member of this county to like, be part of this process, because it just seems like you're so out of the loop. And like, it's like, I don't know, I'm embarrassed to like, be part of this county. So just do your best, because it's, you know, there's so much more to be done, and there's so little time that we have. Because as someone has said before, like, every minute counts, and the minutes that have passed from last month to this month are just like, it's like timeless, you know, it's, time is moving like so quickly and so slowly, and there's so much we can do, and this is, this is our time to do it. Thank you. Yield my time.
Thank you for your comments. Any further public comment?
We have our repeat speaker, Samantha Silverstein.
Okay. Welcome back.
So first, I was going to apologize for speaking so much, but actually, I'm not, because this is an issue that needs to be spoken about over and over and over again. I am white, and I have the privilege of not having had to call the police and know that if I do, I'm safe when I call them. That is not the same for my friends and family and my colleagues and my students, who I stand in front of the classroom every single day. And I have to, I need to know that like, I'm living my own values, so I'm not sorry for talking multiple times because this needs to be heard. $58,000 for a sheriff? Our teachers often make almost half of that, and they put their lives on the line without a gun, every single day, every single day. I have friends who have had to go on lockdown multiple times a year as teachers, who have had to break apart fights in the classroom that are making $35,000. That is, that's disgusting. And like the speaker before me said, that's an embarrassment for our society that we don't recognize the value of our teachers, yet we're okay with continuing to fund individuals that murder black and brown people in our community. Along with the other resources that have been shared with you, I think one thing that would be really beneficial for all of you all to read about before going into the next meeting, short and easy read, Camden, New Jersey. Camden, New Jersey abolished their entire police force several years ago, and their crime rate has gone down over 40%, over 40% in the last couple of years. And I know that a city of 75,000 people is smaller than a county of 140,000, but not by that much. And Minneapolis is also considering this now. If we go into that meeting prepared and educated and informed, I think it's going to be a lot more productive. So I also urge you all to do that research yourself and not rely on the unpaid emotional and mental labor of black and brown members of our community that already know this information and have told us this repeatedly to deaf ears. Read, inform yourselves, and come prepared to have an open and honest discussion. And I yield my time.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, I think we'll go.
We have, it looks like a few more. I'm sorry, I don't want to mispronounce your name.
Oh, that's.
Rafael?
Welcome.
Yeah, so for the record, my name is Rafael Swakowski. I do appreciate that the Monroe County Council has done or is doing a criminal justice assessment. So I think any update on how that's going would be a good way to start off the public commentary. I'm curious as to what methodologies are being used and what, who is being surveyed, and what kind of information is coming through that, as well as when the results of that assessment might be available to the public. I also appreciate that, given the past few months of the coronavirus pandemic, the county council, or the county government is probably facing budget constraints in the same way that state and other local government agencies are. So I think it's important to keep in mind that, given these budget constraints, the county council keeps in mind what parts of the government that they're funding and which parts, as budget cuts inevitably will come, which parts of the budget are maybe not actually fulfilling the services of, you know, public safety and things like that. I think it's a difficult conversation to have, but from my perspective, maybe funding the police department, funding the prison system to the extent that we have, given the current situation, might not be the way that we want to be putting our public funds. So I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. And we'll go with the next in line.
All right, next is Shelby.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shelby Hoshaw. I just wanted to come, like, piggyback on a lot of the other comments that were talking about being, coming to this meeting prepared and being educated. The local chapter of Black Lives Matter has a great resource list on their website, and you can literally just Google like anti-racism, and all the stuff will come up. I think that it's really important for us to engage with this material, because if we are not engaging with the material, it allows us to stay comfortable. And if we are not uncomfortable, nothing is going to change. And that's what's really going to be important, to actually make change in this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And whenever the next person in line is ready to go, please feel free.
Okay, I do not see any more hands raised, and I have not been informed of any callers.
Okay, so now I'm gonna turn.
I apologize. There was one where they just raised, there's our repeat caller, El Gore.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for the floor again. I just wanted to drive home the point that, you know, this council is in a position to take a really critical look at Sheriff Brad Swain's, like, track record and behavior, as previous caller mentioned, like, his, you know, treatment and apparent, like, total disinterest and like, like speakers and like opinions of black women is just like, pretty abhorrent. And in addition to his hiring and then subsequent requirement to fire a drunk sergeant, Brad Swain is one of the only sheriffs in Indiana who still does ICE holds. So what he, what his sheriff's department is allowed to do is profile black and brown people, as we know, but specifically brown people. And if they're undocumented, he calls ICE and gets them deported and sent to, you know, ICE, whatever facilities in Illinois and beyond. Like, this is, this is a, you know, a national and global issue, and it's being done by the sheriff in this very county. Like, I'm just curious if the council is aware of this, because it's also a tremendous disgrace. And I went to, in the fall, there was a public forum at Monroe County Public Library where I learned all of this. And, you know, afterwards, I went, I went and read all the documents from people who this had happened to, like, in our community, and it is just disgusting. Like, do you realize that Brad Swain hates black and brown people? Like, I don't know if that's like, too aggressive, but like, just like, given the facts of the situation, like, Sheriff Brad Swain should not be given, like, hiring rights. And in fact, that man should resign because just like, the, like, the behavior and entitlement that he has given with this authority and this money is like, doing nothing but damage to the people in our community, especially, like, poor people and people of color. And so it's like, you know, it's, it's a lot, and it's very, it's like devastating. So please take all this into consideration as you move forward. I yield my time.
A quick question. Can I get your full name real quick, just for the record?
Yeah, for the record, it's Yvonne Deller.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think, does that wrap up our public comment?
We have another. But we have another repeat speaker. Kel?
Yeah, hard to follow up on the last person, because I agree with pretty much everything that they said. But I just wanted to say, I feel like I anticipate that something that y'all might be feeling right now is like, we can't change all of this, like, all of this isn't in our control. We don't get to make all of these decisions. And I just want to say that, like, that probably is true. And so if this is gonna be something that's three weeks out, I would encourage you, like, get the other stakeholders also in the room, because it's really frustrating for those of us who do engage in these processes at times, to bounce from place to place, being told, well, that's not in our power, that's not in our power, that's not in our power. So if this is gonna be something three weeks out, where things can be planned and put in place and worked into people's schedules, I would say, get everybody in that Zoom room. It's not that hard to click a link. Like, get everybody who needs to be a part of these decisions there, so that the buck can't just get passed over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I also have your full name real quick?
So, looks like we've got another person who's had a couple, going for another. So I think that will conclude all the people who wanted to do a repeat public comment. Who's next? Ms. Susan Tanny?
Yes, we have a new speaker.
Hi there. My name is Cece Tanny. I'm a resident of Bloomington. I would like to ask the county council for a response about how the chief technology officer behaved during the previous county council meeting, in which I was in attendance. I noticed that that individual is not present on this call. I'm wondering if he was fired. I know that was something I personally emailed the council requesting, but I'd like to know how that scenario was handled, and also how you all feel about what was said in the previous meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Petry.
Hi there. This is Nicholas Petry. I just wanted to kind of hop onto the comment about stakeholders in the room and people being held accountable. I would like to just ensure that Ms. Hawk is in the room. I don't see her now.
Please, sir, continue with your comments. Ms. Hawk, please, please. Well, don't interrupt the speaker, please. Mr. Petry, please continue with your comments. We've got three minutes. Okay. Ready to move on to the next. Is there anybody else who wants to give a public comment? Mr. Mutsler.
Mr. Mutsler is our repeat speaker. Would you like me to unmute?
Yes.
One moment, please. All right, go ahead, Mutsler.
Thank you. This is Nathan Mutsler. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I would just like to reiterate that the duty is incumbent on the council to make sure that it is a space that is welcoming and encouraging for all voices. That is not something that I think should rely the burden on the community, but be forefront in the council's mind. And how can we make sure that this is a welcome, engaging, and a space that people want to be at and feel comfortable expressing their views within? Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, it looks like that will conclude our public comments. I want to go back to council now, and see if there's any, do another round of council comments, questions, and then we'll vote. Mr. McKim.
Thank you. Sorry, it took a second to unmute me. Actually, I just, since this was brought up, and I honestly don't know the answer to that, what is the, do we have any kind of update on the justice study, and when we anticipate the first round of results to be available to the public? Do we have any update on that?
I do not know.
I believe Margie Rice could comment on that if she's still on.
Good.
Yeah, Angie Purdy, who's the commissioners administrator, Jeff Cockrell, who's one of the other county attorneys, and I are having a phone call with Ken Ray and Alan Beck Friday to get an update of where we're at. I can tell you that, right before COVID hit, we had requested a bulk data request from Odyssey, which is the court database. And we had took a little time to get the information from the state. We received the data, gave it to the consultants, and then COVID hit. And that has sort of put the study on hold while we dealt with this pandemic. But we did schedule a phone call for Friday to catch up with them. And I'll have more information to report after that. I can tell you that internally, we talked about the fact that it's, it may be a really helpful thing that we have not wrapped up our criminal justice study at this point, because we can incorporate some of the lessons that we learn from George Floyd's death and the resulting conversations that are happening in the community. So we are looking forward to wrapping up some of the information and the lessons and the things that you will learn at your upcoming meeting into the report. So as you know, this is a county-wide criminal justice review of what we're doing internally. And the Human Rights Commission has been involved, Community Justice and Mediation has been involved. And we are looking forward to getting back on track with our study and also working with interested members of the community to make sure that we have a report that is really reflective of Monroe County values.
Thank you.
Any other council members have questions or comments? Ms. Munson?
Yes, this is a question from Ms. Rice. Thank you, thank you for your update on the report and its status. But I would like to know, is there going to be additional stakeholder opportunities for input?
I think there certainly can be. I think that's up to, you know, as you know, the commissioners are the ones who signed the contracts for the consultants, and the county council funded them. We have involvement with the courts and the prosecutor and various branches of Monroe County. And I do think that if public input and stakeholder input is something that you would like to see, we certainly can incorporate that. We have not had, other than, you know, we had community-wide meetings, a series of those that CJM facilitated for us last year, where we got input from members of the public. We have not had formal stakeholder committees or groups, because we were wanting to get far enough along in the study where we had some data. So I do think that this, you know, this year would be a good opportunity to do that stakeholder involvement, if that's something you guys would like.
Thank you. Good to know.
Anybody else like to speak? There's no additional, yes. Ms. Welts?
Yes, I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts. First, I really appreciate this new level of participation that we're seeing. I'm saddened that it's on this topic in a way, because, well, that's how it works. And hopefully, this is, this is a sign of real change that we can implement. Regarding the meeting on the 30th, assuming we pass that as the date, or we agree upon that, I don't know if it's a vote, I wanted to just comment that, you know, we have been looking at and researching what would be the best way to structure such a thing. And we've thrown out ideas like facilitated dialogue or a listening session. And I also hear from several comments tonight that there needs to be some level of information provided as well, so that maybe we could all be starting with the same, well, not the same, but a group of facts and that we can agree on and use to springboard into a productive discussion. I hear, I hear the comments about learning more about abolition and defunding. And I am, I think several of my colleagues also are really trying to better understand those terms and how they're used and why they're used. So I do appreciate that. I feel pretty strongly about stakeholder engagement. I do that kind of thing, or have done that kind of thing a lot in my career. And it's always, it's always an interesting discussion about whether or not more structure or less structure is productive. And I tend to fall on more structure in the process, so that you have specific objectives for how the process works that facilitate maybe a looser idea of the outcome goals. But we, I strongly feel that we should have both outcome goals and process goals as part of this meeting, so that it can move toward possible change, real change. And we aren't just stuck in a cycle of listening sessions. Maybe during planning over the next couple of weeks, I will learn more about others' positions and determine that, yeah, okay, maybe we need to do a lot more listening before we can have progress. But I'm anxious to make, I'm anxious to take steps toward real change. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that we've also been looking at the Eight Can't Wait as maybe a framework for the discussion. And if people are interested in providing resources or ideas on the planning process for this, I would encourage you to either get in touch with the council office. It's probably the best, so that everything can be gathered together. And go to the Monroe County government website, if you haven't already. That's where you will see when our meetings are and what's on the agenda. And you'll also see the openings that we have on our boards and commissions. We don't have the luxury that maybe the city does of cherry picking, as I think somebody might have said. I'm not familiar with how they do it, but I know for a fact that we have lots of openings, and we're looking for people, and we're looking for diverse points of view on our boards and commissions. So please check that out. I've rambled again. But I look forward to taking the next step with all of you. And I really appreciate the involvement, because Black Lives Matter. Thanks.
Any additional comments or questions from council members? Okay, seeing none, I guess the next step here is to vote on the proposed meeting date of June 30th at 6:00 PM.
You don't have to restate it.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilf?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Not present.
I think she's left.
Okay.
Temporarily.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have, we have that settled. We will now move on to the next item for business tonight, and that's with our commissioners' office.
Counsel, I move to approve the request of the commissioners and auditor to amend the 2020 salary ordinance to transfer the payroll administrator position, account line 10024, 40 hours weekly, PAT4 classification, three-year salary level, non-exempt, from the auditor department to the human resources department. This item was.
Go read on the.
This item was originally presented at the May 26 work session and received a 6-1 vote. This is the second reading of this ordinance amendment.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any questions from council? Any further discussion on this? And we have to, we have to take another vote on it, because it was not a unanimous vote the first time. Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Michelle, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
You don't have to. No, it's so close.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Not present.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passed six to one on second reading of ordinance.
And I got item six a little reversed there. So we actually had item A first, which was an update on the township trustee interlocal agreement. And I want to.
I was just gonna say that.
Want to check with our commissioners' office. I think we have some representatives here. And I know council attorney Rice is here, who may have a brief update for us on this, although there's not going to be any action that we take tonight, is my understanding.
That's correct. I can give you a quick update. I did have a phone conversation with Michelle Bright and Kim Alexander last week, and they updated me on the conversations they've had with their Township Trustee Association. The Township Trustee Association is meeting tomorrow at 11 o'clock. They've invited me to participate in that Zoom meeting. So I'm going to be doing that. And then I will be working on the interlocal agreement to share with the Township Trustee Association, also to share with the State Board of Accounts, as well as with the council and commissioners. It's our goal that we will have an interlocal agreement ready for your review and approval at your work session this month. I will say that the State Board of Accounts has given some guidance about how to structure the interlocal, so that we do not receive unfavorable audit opinions. So I'll be working within those confines, and hopefully, what I draft will be found to be acceptable. So that's my update.
Great, great. Thank you. Are there any, yes, Mr. McKim?
Yes, actually, Ms. Rice, could you, you know, just, because we have so many members of the public, I think we need to be extra careful to maybe explain a little bit more about what we're, what we're talking about. And this interlocal is, you know, the discussion we just had was very compact and kind of cryptic for somebody who doesn't already know what we're talking about. And this is something that actually, I think the public might be really interested in. So can you just give a couple of sentences to tell the public what this?
I sure can. So township government, for those who aren't aware of it, is a level of government that is really closer to the people than any other form of government. And so there are township trustees who are elected and who serve in the various townships within Monroe County. And they provide assistance to people who are, it's historically been called, poor relief. But they provide financial assistance to people who are in need of financial help. And they are, because they live in the townships with their neighbors, they're able to provide assistance to them. And the county commissioners and the county council And the county commissioners and the county council had the idea that during this public health crisis that we've been facing, it would be wise for the county government to partner via an interlocal agreement. So it's a kind of essentially a written contract between the county and the township trustees to provide some financial assistance from Monroe County to the township trustees so that they could help people who are affected by COVID-19. And so the state of Indiana has certain guidance from the State Board of Accounts, and there are certain laws in place that we have to follow if we want to do that kind of agreement. The State Board of Accounts has said that it's their audit position that both the county and the township trustees have to have the power that we are trying to exercise. So it can't be that just the townships have the power or the county has the power. So we have to write it in a way that we are exercising a power that the county has and that the township trustees have, and that you are sharing your exercise of that power. As you know, the county had appropriated $100,000 of rainy day funds, and they were considering with this interlocal giving that $100,000 to the Township Trustee Association to spend and to help people in Monroe County who have been negatively affected by COVID-19. So tomorrow, I'm going to listen to the township trustees as they have their meeting, and I will hear their ideas, and then I will be writing an interlocal agreement, again, that I will share with the county government, the commissioners and the council, with the Township Trustee Association and with State Board of Accounts. And hopefully, we will find a way, a legal way, to share the $100,000 of rainy day funds with the township trustees so that they can help people here in Monroe County.
Thank you. And just to follow on, I think that my understanding is that this is also really focused on, in particular, people who might be either evicted or have utility shut offs after the emergency is over. So this is kind of the wave of shut offs that many people anticipate after the state of emergency ends, after the stay on evictions and utility shut offs ends.
Yeah, that's correct. They did say, when I talked to them last week, that they would really like to make sure that each township trustee has discretion to use the funds as they think is necessary in their township, because the needs of the townships vary widely. Some are very rural and some are in the city. And so I know that that's a goal of theirs, is that they have some flexibility in how to use the funds within townships.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, County Attorney Rice. That was really excellent background on that issue, and I hope it was useful for the public. Any other questions or comments before we move on? There's no action to take here, but I'm glad to see that things are progressing in a positive direction with this. So thanks for all the work on this. There's no additional questions at this time. We'll move on to our next item. And we're going to skip past the tax abatement. We already did that. And we'll move on now to one of my favorite topics here, the highway department. All right. Hello, Ms. Ridge.
Counsel, I'll go ahead and make a motion here before we talk. I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1135-0000 cumulative bridge in the amount of $167,818.22 in the services category.
Second.
There's a signal from Kim Shell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It should be $164,818.22. Am I correct, Lisa?
I mean, I'm looking right here. Yes, 164,818.22.
Yes.
Thank you.
Or just
That's a thing.
Would you like me to read?
Go ahead and read the motion again. Withdraw the original motion. Go ahead and
I withdraw my motion, and I'm making a new one. Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1135-0000 cumulative bridge in the amount of $164,818.22 in the services category.
Second.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Ridge?
Good evening.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. So this is one of the projects that we received for a community crossing grant in the awards last fall. So NDOT deposits the money into our cash account, into our QIM bridge. So now we are asking to appropriate that into the Dutch Church Road Bridge line item so that we can pay for the project and reimburse that line.
Very good. Thank you for the background. Are there any council questions or comments for our highway director? Seeing none, are there any public comment on this item? Doesn't look like we have any there either. We'll do a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve an additional appropriation for Fund 1135, Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Mr. Iverson's muted. There we go.
Unmuted, and I vote yes.
Counselor Wilf?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1176-0531 Motor Vehicle Highway Maintenance and Repair in the amount of $304,622.28 in the supplies category.
Second.
Okay. Any additional information, Ms. Ridge?
Actually, this is a paving project. The other one was a bridge project. This is for Van Buren subdivision. It's also a community crossing grant project. So what we are awarded, just so the public knows, this is 50-50 projects. NDOT provides 50% of the cost of the project, and Monroe County pays the other 50%. This portion's paid out of our MVH by Two Minutes line. And actually, Van Buren is being paved this week. We had spent the last month replacing, I believe it was about 36 inlets to improve the drainage. And we've spent about $200,000 in the last two years to replace sidewalk, existing sidewalk, new sidewalk in that subdivision. And this week, they began paving it. So again, this is to appropriate the money into the line that NDOT deposited into the account so that we can pay for the project.
So it's great, great news and a great deal for the county. So thank you so much for all the work on that. Any questions or comments from council members? Mr. Decker?
I just had a quick question for Lisa. Is this, and someone asked me this when I was out and about. Do you think that this is the first time this kind of work has been done in the Van Buren subdivision since the original items went in?
I would assume so. It's one of our oldest subdivisions. The sidewalks have deteriorated quite a bit. We even had pieces where the original developer didn't even eliminate it. If a lot wasn't built, then they didn't build that piece of sidewalk. So we put in those missing pieces so that it can help for people. And then we also had replaced, I believe it was 47 ADA ramps so crossing the street, and it proves that in that subdivision. So it was a huge investment in the subdivision. Again, you can look at the paving cost as probably $600,000, $608,000. The inlets, you know, that's probably $132,000, and then sidewalks. So we probably, over the last two years, put almost $1 million into this subdivision to improve the roads, sidewalks, and the drainage.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from council? Okay, any public comment? No public comment. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve an additional appropriation for Fund 1176, Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Wilf?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Take care. Before we move on to the Health Department, I understand we have a correction that may need to be made in one of our prior votes. Is that right, Michelle?
I just wanted to restate what the roll call vote was. She stated it as six to one. The motion passed six to zero unanimous, since Ms. Hawke was not present at that time. Megan just didn't understand
Got, okay, gotcha.
For not being there, so.
Okay. Very good. So that clears that up. I don't think, we don't need to do another vote on that, another round.
No.
We'll move on. Great. We'll move on to our Health Department now.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 8104-9621 Public Health Emergency Preparedness in the amount of $21,995 in the personnel category, $6,395 in the supplies category, and $3,505 in the services category, for a total amount of $31,895.
Second.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Appreciate your hearing me. As you know, we get public health preparedness funds every year, and this grant runs July through June. So we're just now kind of finishing up one grant we've gotten our award for next year. The bulk of the money is really for part-time work to help our public health coordinator. So you can imagine, and we'll talk more in a little bit, right now they are being worked to the bones. And having a part-time person will greatly enhance the capacity for that division of our department. So the award letter has come to us for this amount, and we are submitting the budget to the state, and they will approve that, and it will come back. We're just trying to get ahead of things a little bit by getting it appropriated now so that the money is available as soon as that award hits us.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Cottle. Are there any questions or comments from council members for our Health Department on this item? Seeing none, are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve an additional appropriation for Fund 8104, Counselor Wilf?
Yes.
Counselor Munson? Counselor Munson?
Not present.
Not present.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Did he call my name?
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Cheryl just popped in.
Oh, cool. Munson?
Counselor Munson.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 9B with the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 8150-9620 TAN grant in the amount of $63,000 in the personnel category, $6,000 in the supplies category, and $6,000 in the services category for a total amount of $75,000.
Second.
Great, thank you. The TANF money, or Temporary Aid to Needy Families, is funds that support our family planning clinic, the Futures Clinic. So TANF falls under that umbrella of Title X, Family Planning Money. We get, sometimes we get Title V money as well. Title V and TANF and Title 20 all follow a October through September grant cycle. But that money comes to the Indiana Family Health Council a little differently. Title X money runs on an April through March. And as you probably are aware, you've been hearing me long enough now that Title X money often kind of lags behind, and we appropriated that money earlier. The TANF money, then you'll look at the grant, is running October through September, but it was just awarded to us. And so this is primarily personnel. And starting in July, we'll have our nurse practitioner full time. Remember that the nurse practitioner we've had just retired, and we have a new one onboard. She's onboard one day a week, and she will start full time. Actually, I think it's like the 30th of June or the 29th of June. Whatever that Monday is, is her first full-time day. So right now, we're really busy getting all of her credentials, getting all of those things ready so that we can bill insurance for her when she's in the office full time.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Cottle. We have any council questions or comments regarding this, regarding 9B? Yes, Mr. Decker?
Penny, a question for you, but please feel free to say, I don't know if that's all you're comfortable with here, but any indicators that grant funding is drying, at risk, et cetera? Just thinking ahead to potential effects from other levels of government that we might interact with?
Yeah. Right now, oddly enough, if I understand Indiana Family Health Council, which is who gets these funds, that we then get them from, they actually, I think, got awarded two years for Title X, which was unusual. And that's the way that I understand it. Certainly, Title X funding, family planning funding is always in jeopardy, to be honest. But right now, I think that we're good. Our revenues have been really good with the Affordable Care Act. We've been able to bill insurance, and we take most, any form of insurance, Medicaid, and as well as payments for people who can afford to pay. We have a sliding scale, so you don't, you can come regardless of your income. And our revenues have been really good. Now, obviously, with COVID hitting and us having limited services for the past several months, revenue's been down a little bit, but I would expect that once the doors are open and we're doing exams again, that those will pick back up.
Thank you.
Great. Any additional questions or comments from council? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? I don't see any public comment. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve an additional appropriation for Fund 8150, Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wilf?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item 9C with the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to create new account lines, 16999 COVID-19 Emergency Personnel and 20011 Other Supplies in Fund 8104-9620 Public Health Preparedness Grant Budget.
Second.
Great. These, this item and the ones following it are all kind of connected. They are with our current Preparedness Fund that I just mentioned, the end of this month. And with COVID-19 hitting, we saw lots of overtime for our public health coordinator, but also we had some supply demands that were not originally in the grant, in the funds. we had some supply demands that were not originally in the grant, in the funds. And so we would like to pay those out and need these two fund lines. So in order to pay for that overtime, we're requesting this COVID-19 Emergency Personnel line. And then we'll be moving some, asking to move some training funds that weren't used into other supplies so that we can cover expenses that we've needed to pay in order to get hand sanitizer and various forms of PPE out.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Cottle? Any comments for Ms. Cottle? Seeing none. Are there any questions or comments, or any comments from the public? And we'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve new account lines in Fund 8104, Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Now on to Item 9D with the Health Department.
Counsel, I moved up to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 8104-9620 Public Health Preparedness from the Services category to the Supply category in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
As I just kind of mentioned a moment ago, we had extra training travel funds unspent, and that was related to COVID-19 and trainings and conferences and travel's been limited. But we did have increased need for supplies, and this, and all of those expenses were approved by the state. But this will allow us to transfer those funds in order to pay for those items.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from Council? Is there any public comment?
I did have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Munson. Sorry.
Yes. Are these COVID-related, Ms. Cottle?
Yes.
So are they flagged as being COVID-related in the accounting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Any public comment on Item 9D? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the category transfer in 8104, Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, and thank you. And we'll move on to our final item with the Health Department, Item 9E.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a fund-to-fund transfer of $10,726.38 from Fund 8104-9620 Public Health Preparedness Grant to Fund 1000-0061 General Fund, Counsel.
Second.
Great. I mentioned earlier the amount of overtime. Our public health coordinator has docked over 300 hours of overtime during COVID. And yes, wow. And she's only one of the staff with, she's probably got them, you know, some of them highest, but we definitely have some other high. And we have the opportunity to use these grant funds to pay that out so that, you know, not only is that kind of outside what would normally be allowed in our personnel policy, but to give her comp time, she would be off the rest of the year. So we can't have that. We need her working. So we want to pay that out, and we have the opportunity to do that with the grant funds.
Thank you. And I'm happy to support this. And I want you to know, Ms. Cottle, that I appreciate every hour, minute, second, and nanosecond that you and your staff have put into keeping the public as safe as possible during this unprecedented crisis. So thank you so very much. Are there any other?
Here, here.
Comments or questions from Council on this issue? Ms. Munson?
Same question again, please. Once this goes over to the comp time payout in the county council's accounting, will this still be flagged for as COVID-19 related?
It's going to be flagged as COVID through the grant being paid out. When it comes over to general fund, we don't want to count it twice.
Okay.
It will not be counted when it goes into our council line.
Just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Council? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Don't see any public comments, so we'll have a vote, roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the fund-to-fund transfer from Fund 8104 to Fund 1000, Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cottle. Have a great rest of the evening. Maybe a couple hours left here for.
You too.
All right. So now we will move on to Item 10, which is with our Council Office. And Ms. Rice and Ms. Shell will have some information for us here.
Yes, first I'll do the motion. I move to approve the request to amend the 2020 Salary Ordinance and add a section called the Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State Mandated Salaries. This section, well, there's a whole bunch.
Sorry.
Yeah. This section to be added is as follows. Annual salaries for the Monroe County Chief Public Defender and the Chief Deputy Public Defender, the Monroe County Sheriff, and the Monroe Circuit Court Commissioner are all tied or related to the salaries mandated by the State of Indiana for the Monroe Circuit Court Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July 1st. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that any and all salaries paid by the Monroe County Council which are tied or related to the above-mentioned salaries mandated by the State of Indiana shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The Monroe County Council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county-set salaries, which are generally modified on January 1st. Additional detail, including Defense Services Standards, Standard G, Supreme Court Compensation Information, and Indiana Code 33-39-6-5 are incorporated by reference.
Second.
We've got the double angle on Councilmember Wilt, right? This is great.
My computer's dying. I'm about to switch.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we want to have some background from staff, please? It's like everybody's muted.
Who would you like me to unmute?
Let's do Margie Rice and Kim Shell.
Give me one moment.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll address this. So I apologize, Kate. I'm the one that wrote that language. It is a lawyerly paragraph. I would like to point out that the language is intended to go into the salary ordinance to remind the Council and all of us that we do have some salaries that are tied to the elected prosecutor's salary. And because the elected prosecutor's salary changed, changes July 1st, these other salaries, which are intended to be a percentage of or equal to the prosecutor's salary, need to also change July 1. The codes that are referenced at the bottom of that paragraph that are incorporated, it includes the Defense Services Standards, which are standards related to how we pay public defenders. And the Supreme Court Compensation Information is related to our Commissioner of the Court. Indiana Code 333965 is a reference to the prosecutor's salary. I would, if it wasn't, if it wouldn't be too much trouble, I would like to add, and Kate, when you do your final motion, you could say, you move, that it will be adopted as I have amended it. I'd also like to include Indiana Code 362317. So Indiana Code 36-2-317, that's the reference to the maximum amount allowable to, for us to pay the sheriff. So it would read, additional detail, including Defense Services Standards, Standard G, Supreme Court Compensation Information, Indiana Code 36-2-3-17, and Indiana Code 33-39-6-5 are incorporated by reference. The benefit of having the language in your salary ordinance is it will remind us, because we will forget, that on July 1, we need to change the public defender, the chief public defender, the sheriff, and the court commissioner's salaries. And I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Are there any questions for? Yeah, Mr. McKim?
Yeah, so wait, Margie, just, I might understand, you are suggesting that we amend the motion that was read on the floor?
Yes, to add one statutory citation at the, in that last paragraph, or last line, and it would be Indiana Code 36-2-3-17.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Fair enough. Okay. And do we need to, do we need to take a vote on the, on that amended motion? Okay.
Sadly, yes.
Yep. So we'll do a roll call vote on that.
Let me do it?
Yeah.
Okay. So on the motion to amend the res, to, sorry, on the motion to amend, to add IC36-2-3-17 to the section? Counselor McK, Munson, I mean?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. So now we'll go back to the underlying motion. Is there any questions or comments? At this, yes, Ms. Hawke?
Do we have, so we're doing that as of July 1 this year, so that will adjust our budgets. Do we have a dollar amount, which that will be?
I will be able to provide that later. I don't have that currently in front of me.
It would be really nice if maybe the state will readjust their thoughts on, on that salary increase, because they said they were going to adjust budgets. Do we have any further information on that? Does anyone know?
I haven't received anything with regards to budgets.
Because they were talking about, what, how much of a reduction? Anybody remember what the governor said?
Well, it was a 15%, wasn't it?
Right.
But I don't know, I don't know if that affect, I don't know if that affects the judicial branch. That may not.
Right. That was our question at the time, and I had hoped we'd have an answer by now, but I don't know. Perhaps nobody but checked it out. But let's get that checked out. It's not our job to do it, Jeff. Nobody should do.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll check in with the public. Are there any public comments for this item? None? Okay.
Yep. There'll be square beacon.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. Just a quick question. What's the consequence of not approving this item? Is this an item that the Council is essentially required by law to approve? Or is there any room to make a policy decision here and say, no, we're just not going to approve this? That's the question. Thanks.
Ms. Rice?
He was reading my mind.
I can address that. So yes and no. We would be out of compliance with the defense standards, which is how we get reimbursed from the State of Indiana. So if you don't want to be out of compliance with the defense standards and risk your reimbursement, you would have to approve that for the public defender, the chief public defender. The court commissioner, that salary is also set by the State of Indiana, so we need to approve that one. As you know, the Council approves a contract with the sheriff for the sheriff's salary. There is some discretion in a range of salaries that you could pay. And as you know, when you approve the contract, last time you approved a one-year contract, the contract that went before you was, for approval, was a three-year contract. And the Council chose to only approve a contract for one year. So there is some statutory flexibility with the setting of the salary. The statute that I mentioned is the maximum amount that you can pay the sheriff. And Monroe County does pay the maximum. So, but there is a little flexibility in that one.
Thank you. Are there any other, yeah, Mr. Deckard?
On the chief, on the public defender dollars or the defense dollars, that's a system by which if we do not comply with the defense standards, we could be at risk at losing the state reimbursement for our, our public defenders, correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
And that's a 40, is it 25 to 40% ratio reimbursement?
I think Jeff and Kim had his, he knows this really well. Jeff and Kim had his hand up.
Oh, actually, I was just going to mention that this, this was a longstanding sort of battle for equity and compensating the public defender, not just, not just here, but everywhere. And that's, you know, the statutory language has kind of evolved from substantially equivalent pay to actually equivalent pay. And, you know, at one point, we paid the public defender 90%, but of what the prosecutor did. But there was, you know, statewide, a lot of, a lot of pushback on that. And there was really a general feeling overall that there was a need for a public defender to be paid at the same level as the prosecutor. And so that's where, kind of, that's where we are now. As far as the reimbursement percentage, that number has dropped out of my mind. I'm sorry. I have forgotten.
I can figure it's 40%.
I think it's.
I mean, that's what sounds right, but.
Yeah.
It's substantial.
Right. It's large.
But it's only felonies and chins cases. It's not, not every case gets reimbursed.
It's different.
Right. I was gonna say, yeah, it's certain cases and situations that they get reimbursed. In my understanding, it's, it's 40% gets reimbursed. I also want to state that we have a letter signed by the judges that states that they want the court commissioner to be, to receive his increase at, on July the 1st, at the 75%.
So we have that also, which I think I shared that with you guys. And then with regards to the sheriff, the contract states, and this was in the contract when I was going through it, it does state that his salary will be set at the prosecutor's level, that it's not an amount or flexibility, but his contract states that it will be the same as whatever the elected prosecutor will receive.
Okay. Any other comments or questions at this time? Seeing none, is there any public comment? I don't see any public comment. We'll have a roll call vote here on our last item for the evening.
On the motion to approve amendment to the 2020 Salary Ordinance regarding county salaries tied to state-mandated salaries along with the amendment, Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wilt?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Duckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. No second reading necessary.
Great, thank you. And now we will do council comments. This is our final agenda item for the evening. Are there any council members who would like to to provide comments at this time? So on Mr. Deckard's hand?
I will be exceedingly brief, I promise.
I like that, exceedingly brief.
I meant to do this in the liaison update, and I did not. But I just want to hear publicly thank all the poll workers that came out and made the primary election happen. While they did work with face masks, obviously, they did so as safe as possible, but at risk to themselves for doing that. They worked with less poll sites and certainly the absentee counters and all the folks that went into getting us our result. I know it wasn't out when they wanted it, and certainly when the public wanted it, but the realities of this pandemic and this election, they worked with what they had, and it changed all the time. So I just want to thank them and encourage folks for this fall. However that election shapes up to have need for volunteers, workers, whether it's passing out masks, et cetera, I would encourage the public to really think about it. There was a group of recent high school graduates over at Edgewood that were doing a lot of work in that polling site, and they were tremendous. So thank you very much. I'll be quiet now.
Member Munson?
I'll be. Okay. My exceedingly brief comment will tag on Counselor Deckard's. I want to thank all the members of the public who came out to vote and brought their face masks. This was really, really heartwarming to me, to see that they wanted to protect their community and the poll workers. Counselors Deckard and McKim and I passed out face masks provided by county government to those who didn't have them. And I thank the people who accepted those. And I think we had just a really great community involvement for our election day. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Hawke?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that I voice my appreciation for our law enforcement officers, our first responders, the people that work for Central Dispatch, the people who are responding when you have a car wreck or you need someone to show up. We have always supported our law enforcement folks. And I want to make sure they understand they are appreciated by a large majority of this community. Too many times, when you see that there's concerns about the direction some things are going, there may be a whole group that thinks that they're not being appreciated. And I want to make sure that they know that they are appreciated and that we could not survive in this community if we didn't have them to help us be safe within our homes and our communities and our job places. So that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke. Yes, appreciate all of our Monroe County employees, and particularly tonight, too. Want to give a big shout out to Megan Miller and Michelle Dayton and Kim Shell and Margie Rice and all the department heads that were with us tonight on another very long meeting. Really appreciate your dedication to county government and all the work that you do. And Megan, you're doing a great job. I know you're still new in your role, but as I was telling Kim earlier today, doing a terrific job, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you all. I appreciate that so much.
And, you know, also want to make sure to thank the public. Boy, they're really coming out in great numbers to view our meetings and provide input and feedback on what we're doing, and this is really remarkable. We've got 36 participants still in this meeting. You know, when we were in the Natu Hill Room, we'd be lucky to have one or two people left at this time. But it's great to see so many people coming out and really wanting to get involved with their local government. So thank you all very much to the public as well. Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, that will do it. We are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.